Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Lucas.
Here.
Kimmons.
Here.
Kaiser.
Here.
McEwen.
Here.
Graff.
Here.
Thank you. Everyone should have seen the copy of the agenda in your minutes. Entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda at this time.
So moved.
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the approval of the agenda signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the agenda has passed. Also in your package, you should have received the minutes for the meetings for July fifteenth and July twenty ninth. Are there any corrections or discussion regarding those minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
And we have a second. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, minutes have been approved. Just like to take a second real quick and let everyone know, if you do plan to come and speak to the council, please come up and grab a green card from the clerk, fill out your name and address, and you'll have four minutes to address the council. If anyone else shows up, we'll, we'll let them know that at that time as well. Also, just kind of want to make mention that the time for, to, to address the council is during the council meeting. We'll, we'll call up at a specific time. We've had a few people that have tried speaking out during the work session, and that's not really the appropriate time to do that. So if there's a specific topic that you want to discuss, the council meeting is the time to do that. So just wanted to make that clear. Recognition of visitors, Mr. Bogowski.
No visitors today, Mr. Mayor.
No visitors. Okay. Down to communications requests and informational items, number two, a request from Brittany Long to hold a Colts Cure 5K on September seventh, 2024.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we received a request for a brand new 5K this year from Brittany Long for Colts Cure on September seventh. This has been reviewed by the police department and the parks department, and we are recommending approval.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the approval of the Colts Cure 5K? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for the approval.
So moved.
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor of approving the Colts Cure 5K signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, has been approved. As with most evenings, we do have a consent agenda this evening. Numbers three through ten on the agenda. Is there any of these items that anyone would like to have removed for individual discussion? None. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for the reading of the consent agenda, please.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor of the reading the consent agenda signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Ms. Clerk, please read the consent agenda one time.
Bill number R one six seven seven, a resolution authorizing a master service agreement with Lexipol LLC to provide police policy services. Bill number R one six seven eight, a resolution authorizing use of Notion Front to provide promotional services to the Moberly Police Department. Bill number R one six seven nine, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a hose roller unit from Roll and Rack LLC for the Moberly Fire Department. Bill number R one six eight zero, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a Polaris Ranger Crew XP from Polaris Sales Incorporated for the Moberly Fire Department. Bill number R one six eight one, a resolution authorizing the purchase of various fire equipment from multiple vendors for the Moberly Fire Department. Bill number R one six eight two, a resolution accepting the bid and authorizing the purchase of hose testing equipment from Dingus Fire Company for the Moberly Fire Department. Bill number R one six eight three, a resolution accepting a quitclaim deed from Warren Henry Hutton as trustee of the Warren and Helen Hutton Family Living Trust. And bill number R one six eight four, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a survey grade GPS unit from Laser Specialist Incorporated.
Thank you. There you have it, the consent agenda for this evening. Is there any further discussion regarding any of the items on the consent agenda? With hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor for the approval of the consent agenda signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the consent agenda for this evening has passed. Moving right along, ordinances and resolutions, number eleven and ordinance, Mr. Kaiser.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have an ordinance accepting and authorizing execution of a Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission Transportation Enhancement Funds Program Agreement. Ask to be read twice for consideration, please.
Thank you. We have a motion for the reading of the ordinance. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor of the reading of the ordinance signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, first reading, please.
An ordinance accepting and authorizing execution of a Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission Transportation Enhancement Funds Program Agreement for phase two of the Moberly Street Sidewalk Project.
Thank you. Any further discussion regarding the ordinance? Hearing none, second reading, please.
An ordinance accepting and authorizing execution of a Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission Transportation Enhancement Funds Program Agreement for phase two of the Moberly Street Sidewalk Project.
Thank you. Last chance for any further discussion or questions. Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Lucas.
Yes.
Kimmons.
Yes.
Kaiser.
Yes.
McEwen.
Yes.
Graff.
Yes.
Thank you. The ordinance has passed. Number twelve, a resolution, Mrs. Graff.
Mayor, I have an, a resolution of the City of Moberly, Missouri accepting a Firefighters Association of Missouri Grant Award. And I ask that it be read once for consideration.
Thank you. We have a motion for the reading of the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor, the reading of the resolution signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, first and only reading, please.
A resolution of the City of Moberly, Missouri, accepting a Firefighters Association of Missouri Grant Award.
Thank you. Last chance for any further discussion or questions. Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the resolution has passed. Number thirteen, a resolution, Mr. Kimmons.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a resolution adopting the Randolph County Multi Jurisdictional Local Hazard Mitigation Plan. And I ask that it be read once. Consideration passes.
Thank you. We have a motion for the reading of the resolution. Is there a second?
Yes, second.
We have a second. All those in favor for the reading of the resolution signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, first and only reading, please.
A resolution adopting the Randolph County Multi Jurisdictional Local Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Thank you. Last chance for questions, discussion. Hearing none, we entertain a motion for the approval of the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Now you guys were on at that time, weren't you? We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor for the approval of the resolution signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the resolution has been adopted. Number fourteen, a resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I have a resolution recording the destruction of certain local government records and ask that it be read once for consideration.
Thank you. We have a motion for the reading of the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, first and only reading, please.
A resolution recording the destruction of certain local government records.
Thank you. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the resolution.
So moved.
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
And we have a second. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the resolution has passed. Number fifteen, a resolution, Mr. Kaiser.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Crockett Geotechnical Testing Lab. Ask to be read twice or once for consideration.
Thank you. We have a motion for the reading of the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor for the reading signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, first and only reading, please.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Crockett Geotechnical Testing Lab LLC for professional engineering services.
Thank you. Is there any additional questions or discussion regarding the resolution? Hearing none, I'll entertain, entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor for the approval signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the resolution has passed. Moving along quickly, number sixteen, a resolution, Mrs. Graff.
Mr. Mayor, I have a resolution appropriating money out of the treasury of the City of Moberly, Missouri to pay the expenses due between July twelfth and July thirtieth. And I ask that it be read once for consideration.
Thank you. We have a motion for the reading of the resolution. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, first and only reading, please.
A resolution appropriating money out of the treasury of the City of Moberly, Missouri to pay expenses due between July twelfth, 2024, and July thirtieth, 2024 in the amount of five hundred seventy-six thousand, six hundred twenty-two dollars and forty-six cents.
Thank you. I hereby certify that there's sufficient money standing to the credit of the City of Moberly, Missouri, unappropriated in the funds identified in this resolution to meet the requirements of this resolution. City Treasurer Gregory L. Hodge. I didn't think I'd ever say that again. Any further discussion regarding the resolution? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the resolution has passed. I believe that was number sixteen, correct?
Yep.
Okay. Down the list here. Moving on to number seventeen. Consideration of three appointments to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Does that mean you just go ahead and with that one, Mr. Okay. The council is looking to approve to the Planning and Zoning Commission a term which will expire in July for the following, Connie Asbury, Lorna Miles, and Bob Riley. We advertised for applicants and received six applications. Council suggested appointing Lorna Miles, Jane Lobber, and Jerry Swartz at the July fifteenth work session. So I would entertain a motion for the approval of the three recommended individuals.
So moved. Second.
We got a motion and a second. All those in favor for the approval of the appointments signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. These individuals have been appointed. I'd like to thank everyone for submitting their, their applications as well. And it's not, it's not easy to come up here and volunteer and do these things, but we appreciate every, each and every one of you. And for the ones that are actually falling off, because they've turned out, termed out, we appreciate your service as well. Number eighteen, public comments. So if you were not here in the beginning, if you do wish to address the council, this would be the time to do that, not during the work session. We need you to come up and grab a green card from the clerk and fill out your name and address, and you'll have four minutes to address the council. So. Which one of these can go first? Okay. Go ahead and have you come up to the microphone and state your name and your address, and you will have four minutes to address the council.
My name is Tara L. Bailey. I live at 308 Berkeley Street here in Moberly.
He's going to turn your microphone on for you.
It's all right.
Yeah, you're okay.
I'm good. Oh, that's okay. I'm sorry. Do you need me to get it?
Nope, you're good. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I have muscle tension, dystonia, so my muscles are trying to help me have a voice. But I am here because my son, David, was attacked on Saturday by a vicious dog. He wasn't provoking the dog, he was riding his bike with his friends. And this dog came out of nowhere, knocked him off his bike, and then proceeded to bite him. He has to go through rabies shots. He has to go back tomorrow, next, this coming Saturday, and next Saturday. And he's scared to death of needles. He started having nightmares now. And something needs to be done because even our mailman has been attacked by a vicious dog, and nothing's being done about it, and it's time for this to stop. I don't want anyone else to have to go through this like I did. I take blood thinners, and if this happened to me, I could bleed to death. And I don't want some elderly person to be walking down the street minding their business and get attacked. So I really think that we need to start processing and getting vicious dogs off the streets. No more allowing these people to get slaps on the wrist and being able to get their dogs back, and their dog do it again and again and again. It needs to stop, and it needs to stop today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and your address, and you'll have four minutes to address the council. I have the same problem.
My name is Deborah Fristogaines. That was my daughter. And we live at 308 Bertley Street, as she stated. And that's my grandson. I have other grandchildren, but that's the only one that I ever got to see born. And when you hurt him, it hurts me. And I just can't phantom the things that go on in our city and nothing is done, are improved. And we need to make these improvements. Like she said, enforce that dog leash law, hand out tickets. It's your responsibility. All other states in this country have that law, and they enforce it. And then, you know, we've already had one child that was ran over with a brush hub on front of the truck, and the guy ran. I don't want another child hurt. I don't. I sit on my porch in the morning, and I watch people drag race up Bertley to Farrel, coming down from Barrow, run right through, stop, stop. We have a lot of children in that neighborhood that need to be protected. We need to put up signs, children at play. We need that. Speed bumps, because that's the only thing that's going to stop them. And then you have children that live a mile away, walking to school. Shouldn't be. They have no sidewalks walking to that school. And I hear y'all might be addressing the sidewalks, so I know that'll get taken care of. But I just want to protect our children.
Sure.
I love children, and I don't want any family to go through what we went through Saturday. I could hear my grandson, I was in my family room, I heard him coming up the street screaming. And that dog's teeth went deep in his beak, and they won't stitch. But I asked you all to consider that. It could be your child, your granddaughter, anybody. You shouldn't go through that. No parent should have to suffer that with an eight-year-old child. The other child was fourteen. And the man just let him.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishes to address the council? Please state your name and address. For the record, you'll have four minutes.
Tamara Vincy. I live at 550 Farrel Street. My comments are in regards to what appears to be a lack of enforcement of the codes for chapter eight pertaining to animals, most specifically sections fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, regarding animals at large, vicious dogs, dangerous dogs, public nuisance dogs, and violations. I myself have made a complaint to the ACO, I believe it was early March, for the same dog that has tried to attack on our mail carrier because that dog charged my children on my own property twice. And I, I understand that part of the problem with these dogs is not enough citizens logging complaints about these dogs. However, we are consistently told that unless there is proof, it's really the owner's word against our own. Basically, citizens have zero trust in Moberly PD that they will actually help us with these dogs. There have been multiple problem dogs in the city of Moberly the last couple of years. Only one that I know of that was actually destroyed is because police officers had to pry it off of the woman's dead dog's body. And I truly believe, because there was another dog on West Coats a couple of years ago who kept attacking other animals, it kept being given back to the owner. We would really like the city, we understand there's a lack of funding, especially for the ACO. They really don't respond to dog at large calls. But if there was something that we could do to increase funding so that possibly these codes could be enforced, and I'm talking stiffer fines, much more than a hundred dollar fine, first one violates section, or chapter eight, section nineteen, subsection C, if a person is found guilty two or more times of harboring a public nuisance dog, which I think is defined as one that's frequently allowed to run loose, a fine of maybe a hundred dollars. That's a slap on the wrist, especially to people who make money, especially to people who really don't care about breaking the law in other ways. We understand this is a big project and undertaking, it's a lot to ask, but a lot of us, I was told by the ACO to not defend my kids when I made the comment that I pack wasp spray everywhere I go. I walk my son up the street to his friend's house, and I take pepper spray or a can of wasp spray, and I tell my teenagers to do the same thing, because we don't know if Spirit is going to charge us. And now, obviously, there's another dog that will just run out and run at kids. It's horrible. I mean, half the time I'm scared to let my kids play in my own yard because it's not fenced. So really, a plea to the city. Chapter eight, animals, animals at large, dangerous animals, if it's bit a kid, you know, if we have seen it kill an animal, okay, yes, that's my request, please.
Can I, I do have one question for you, and I'll see if any of the others do. But do you, do you notice that the dogs that you guys are referring to are repeat offender type dogs? Or are these kind of a one-off, the dog got out and this situation happened?
The dog that I called the ACO about is a repeat offender. There are neighbors in the street that live in the house right next to, and when I was talking to them Saturday, asking if they had video footage of David's attack, he was talking about Spirit. I know the dog's name is Spirit. I've tried to interact with this dog with its owner's presence so that I wouldn't have to worry about it coming after my kids, and it didn't do any good. Spirit is a repeat offender. The one that attacked David, we really don't know. I don't think we can really safely say anything until maybe police have reviewed the footage, and then we can know conclusively if it has gone after another child on Vinsel, which is what we think. But some of the other dogs, yes, they have been repeat offenders.
Okay.
Especially the one on Coats.
Yeah, I have a question. What was the response to David's attack? I mean, did, did any, did they, sure. Nope, just doing it.
What kind of, what do you mean by response?
Was there, I assume that you contacted the police and what they say. Was there, uh, I assume that you contacted the police and what they say?
And, uh, the police officer did show up. Um, he spoke more with my mom because I had to get my son to the ER immediately. Uh, he came there and he spoke with me and David about the dog. And we know that the dog is three-legged, that he, it is gray and black. Um, I talked to my cousin who lives right next door and the dog came over there as well and growled and charged at him in the same day. So, there's, they just told me, the officer told me that. He went and talked to a guy that had contacted a woman who contacted me via Facebook Messenger and gave him, me his number, so I gave it to the police officer and he contacted the gentleman. And then all of a sudden, it was, my dogs have never been out, I don't know what you're talking about, all this kinda stuff, so that's why we're doing a video surveillance and people have been bringing in video footage.
So there was no, like, indication of what happened? What, what is the protocol from the officer, like, when there is a, when the dog bites a child, they didn't say, like?
They did not tell me that.
No. What I got, because I spoke with the officer when I was talking with my neighbors after it happened, he was talking to people on the street to find out who had seen anything, if anyone had cameras, that kind of thing. He said that, first of all, what they needed to do was they needed to find proof. They needed to be able to pinpoint, okay, what dog was it? Because if there's no picture proof, and this is what I had been told before when I witnessed a few dogs kill a pet on my street, is unless there's picture proof, it's your word against the owner's word. And if the owner says their dog wasn't out, then can you really prove that their dog was out? And that's what they do. And then, and this is, if you don't want me talking about speculation, I won't, but.
Yeah, we'll leave spec, leave speculation.
Okay. I was gonna say, there's a previous.
There's investigation, yeah. Okay. Well, thank you guys very much for coming forward. I know that's not easy and so, um.
I'd like to say that the police officer that is working with us, fantastic, polite, mannerable, shows that he cares.
Officer two forty-nine.
He's doing an excellent job. He said that he's not gonna rest until he finds out who did this.
Thank you ladies very much. Thank you. Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else to address the council at this time? Well, I think that does it for the agenda for, for tonight's council meeting. So, I would entertain a motion to adjourn, uh, to a work session followed by a closed session to discuss the status of legal and personnel matters.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Roll call, please.
Lucas?
Yes.
Hemmons?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
McKeon?
Yes.
Graff?
Yes.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much for coming. Thank you. Move right into the work session as it is a little bit lengthy this evening. And go ahead and get moving. So, number one, a proposal from the Tourism Advisory Commission. Who would like to take that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is a requ, this is a proposal from the Tourism Advisory Commission to fund the craft fair for four hundred dollars to assist with the advertising and promotion of the craft fair.
Any object, any discussion or objection to moving that forward? Notice the, the amount was for the four hundred dollars and they, they had submitted for a little bit higher, it looked like, but there were some things that just weren't covered under the, the tourism, what it covers, rent, things like that.
Yeah, there were some, they hadn't advertised it like they had been requested to in the past and so they're kinda putting that criteria on there to do the certain social media they had. Year they had done that process, they over, more than doubled their turnout, so.
Very good, very good. Okay, uh, any objection to, to moving this forward? Hearing none, we'll move this forward to the next city council meeting. Number two, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of a combined waterworks and sewage system revenue bond, uh, State of Missouri Direct Loan Program Series twenty twenty-four and the maximum principal amount of not to exceed one million, one hundred sixty-six thousand dollars, prescribing the form and details of the bond and authorizing certain other actions and documents in connection therewith.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Uh, item two and three tonight are really about the same project. Um, it is about the Sparks Avenue Utilities Project that will be funded through an SRF loan. So, state revolving fund, this is DNR, uh, funding that we borrow and pay back over time. Moberly has done this, uh, many times in its past. We issued, uh, SRF bonds in two thousand four and two thousand six. Um, so this is something that was voter-approved authority several years back. Um, but because of some of the grants that the city procured, we haven't had to use it until now, so. Um, the attorney that is representing us for the bond documents could not be here today. He is Jason Terry. He represented us for the chapter one hundred, uh, project with the equipment share, if, for those of you that were on the council. He will be at the next council meeting to answer any direct questions you might have on that.
Okay, any additional discussion, questions? So we can always ask those next week when the, when the attorney's here.
It is a twenty-year bond payment, so, um, if you've kinda noticed, the oh-four bonds, the first series is retired at this point, been paid off, so.
Okay. Any objections to moving this forward to the next council meeting? Hearing none, we will move this forward. Uh, number three, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a three-year financial services agreement with Piper Sandler and Company.
Yes, as part of the, uh, SRF process, we have to have an independent third-party financial advisor, uh, that looks through the city's books and says, yes, this is debt service that you can pay, you have appropriate revenues allocated to make these payments. Uh, this particular gentleman, Todd Goffey, with Piper Sandler, actually represented us last go around, so he's had a long relationship with the city. And it'd be our recommendation to continue using them, so.
Okay. Any additional questions? Hearing none, any objection to moving this forward to the next council meeting? Okay, number three, we will move forward to the next council meeting. Number four, an ordinance establishing the tax levy for the city of Moberly, Missouri for the year twenty twenty-four.
Mayor and council, this ordinance, it follows Missouri state statutes and it must be adopted by September first of each year in order for us to collect taxes for the year. And we did hold our public hearing on May twentieth. Um, the rates are set by the Missouri State Auditor and we recommend that you move this forward to the next council meeting.
Thank you. Uh, any additional questions? Any objections to moving this forward to the next council meeting? Okay, hearing none, we will move that forward. Number five, four surface aspirating aerators mixers for the wastewater treatment plant.
Sean, why don't you come up for the next three items?
Yeah, we haven't got you too many times. Good luck.
Here we go. All right, so, uh, you know, you've got the summary in front of you, but these are to aerate wastewater in the solace process at, at the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, we've had two out of four fail. There's two in each tank, two tanks. Trying to picture this for you. Uh, and they're, they're needed to stir and aerate the water for further digestion or biological treatment, if you will.
Okay. Any questions for Sean regarding the purchase of the aerators? Hearing none, any objections to moving this forward to the next council meeting? Okay, we will move this right on forward. Uh, moving on, number six, lead service line inventory professional services contract.
Did I mean it again?
Yeah, that's, that's you. Yes, I'm sorry.
Make sure, uh, so in your summary there, you know, the EPA developed a, a lead copper rule back in nineteen ninety-one. And then in two thousand twenty-one, they did a revision to that. And that revision requires all systems in Missouri and across the nation to develop an inventory of your service lines in the system. Uh, and what they're targeting is lead in the service lines. And so, the deadline to meet that is October sixteenth of this year. Uh, this agreement addresses and helps us to comply with that per the deadline. If we were to try to do it ourselves, we are not gonna make it.
That was really one of my questions. This is not a project that could be completed by staff, so it just, it.
I think the answer is it could, but it would be very time-consuming and we're so close to this deadline. I, I would say it would take another year for us to develop the tools to capture the data, to prepare it in the EPA format that they're looking for. Uh, so that's why, I mean, I can't speak to why this wasn't started earlier, cuz I haven't been here long enough, but.
Right.
But yeah, they have the tools. They've helped, uh, multiple other communities do the same thing.
Final question that I had with it is, it seems like some of these, these projects that we do, um, you know, obviously nineteen thousand five hundred, um, and we've got a four thousand dollar available budget. But it seems like these are the ones that, that constantly have, uh, added fees, added fees, you know? Are we, is this thing gonna be fifty thousand dollars before we're, before we're done?
That's a million-dollar question.
Not a fifty thousand dollar question, million-dollar question.
Yeah, because this is the first step in this, uh, once we hit this deadline, there's a bunch of reporting requirements. If we're not compliant, we have different reporting that goes out to the general public. Uh, and they're, they've got, uh, what's it called? The next step in this is an improvement, so lead copper rule improvement. So they're improving on the rule. And what that says is after the October deadline, now we have ten years to eliminate all lead in the service lines within the system. So, uh, first part's inventory, see what's out there, the next step, and they don't have that finalized yet. They rolled the, the proposal out November of last year. They're supposed to have the final ruling on that per the deadline in October of this year. So we'll know what to expect moving forward, but we don't have that yet.
Okay. Any additional questions or objections to moving this forward to the next meeting? Hearing none, moving on. Uh, number seven, sewer inspection camera van system. Seems like to me we could've done the last one with this.
So, uh, again, you've got the summary in front of you, uh, the existing camera system that the city possesses, that's not it. That's kinda what we're going to, to give you a visual. Uh, it is a trailer unit. And so it's, it's dated, it's, uh, been around since two thousand twelve. Uh, it's not as reliable as it once was, and so we're wanting to upgrade to a van system. A trailer requires a pickup truck to pull it around, so it's, it takes up more space, it's hard to maneuver on job sites. You guys know we have a lot of narrow streets and alleyways, uh, in their system. Uh, this is a single unit, a camera van, if you will. All the equipment goes on the van, so it's, it's much easier to get in and out of, uh, spaces versus pulling a trailer. And it would free up a pickup truck for other work if we needed it.
Is this the, what we approved, uh, during our, our budget meeting, that the, the camera, the remote, remote control, that whole project?
Yeah, this was a CIP item.
This, the same, same deal, okay. Any additional questions? Any objections to moving this forward to the next council meeting? Okay, you're off the hot seat, man. Thank you. Okay, number eight, an ordinance amending City of Moberly code sections forty-six dash three and forty-six dash one one eight and adoptance, adopting section forty-six dash one five five pertaining to short-term rental housing facilities. Mr. Sanders?
So, as you know, that's, it's allowed, short-term housing is allowed in all those zones. It's pri, uh, primary or, uh, in all the zones except R one and R two currently. And all the items that are listed on the additional things, there are five items that were talked about extensively at the last planning and zoning meeting regarding taxation and those, those fees already apply. This ordinance is just, or text amendment is just cleaning that up, putting those all in the same area with the short-term housing. The real meat and potato of this is the R one and the R two were being removed off the conditional use. That was the, what the text amendment puts in place because that was deemed to be controversial and we're trying to find a way to better handle the R one, R twos as they were pertaining to the short-term housing.
You, did you say that it's gonna be removed off R one and R two?
So, that's what the ordinance is in front of you, that draft amendment does. It makes it where if you approve that, that would take the conditional requirement off the R one and R two.
It's allowed, it no longer needs, it's a conditional use.
So there are a couple of things that we had discussed, um, that I had brought to, to Mr. Bogowski's attention. I, I think the, the council is, is willing to, to go ahead and move this forward, but something that we would kinda like to see as a, um, as an addition to this. Um, number one, uh, what are some of the repercussions for violators and violations? You know, how, how do we solve the, the, the ones that cause the problems and ruin it for everyone else? Um, the ones that maybe don't pay their taxes, the ones that, that maybe host the people that they shouldn't be hosting. Um, I think that's something, you know, the process in that is something that we would like to see. Um, number two, the process for which folks pay their tax to the city. I know this came up during the planning and zoning, uh, and that was one of the items that, uh, they made pretty clear to me that they would like to see that process streamlined because of, you know, apparently there's been some issues with that. Um, and Michael, uh, thought that that was something that could be completed, uh, by the next, the next council meeting. And then the last one, um, and this was kind of a, a little bit different, but really the, the, the process for which, uh, a neighborhood could not have this happen. Um, so obviously if they, if they create an HOA and they create a, a rule in that HOA and, and it doesn't happen, um, what I would like to see is when they call and we're informing them of this entire process, just point them in the right direction. We're knowledgeable on being able to point them in the right direction on, you know, we don't have to get them started, we don't have to do it for them, but at least just, this is what you have to go to do this and, and that way they're not just completely lost. Um, go ahead, sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, mo, a lot of subdivisions already have, uh, covenances in place and all that is set up. And in most cases, the developer throughout the initial phases of that are, are the primary, uh, chairman of the board or chairman of the group and then after they sell the lots off or a certain percentage are sold off, then they take ownership. I mean, I'm sure we can work with, uh, Randall or attorney and get that laid out in a format that we can hand off a, a basic diagram to get people started or back to, a lot of them have let them just go away. And there, there's still, rules are there, they just don't have meetings and set up the procedures they need to do.
Right, right. And they develop the processes in which, you know, they pay their taxes and, and how all that works. So, I think, uh, uh, I, I think that we're ready to, and, and I'm not trying to speak for you guys, but I think we're ready to move this forward, um, as long as we can kinda see those, see those at the next, the next council meeting. Am I correct on that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So, uh, any other discussion, any other questions on?
Nope.
Okay, we'll move that forward to the next council meeting then. I lost my number. Number, are we on?
Nine. Yep, nine.
Nine. Number nine, notice of public hearing for a zoning change application submitted by Robert Gillenwater.
This is the former, uh, Seatop location, you know, next to the towers over there was the, uh, Drug and Alcohol Counseling Building. It was a single-story metal building, had bathroom, open in the middle, had bathrooms on both sides. Uh, anyhow, this is just the zoning change, but they're, uh, they're recommending, wanting to make that into a duplex and so they're asking for that to be rezoned from B three to R two. It's surround completely, uh, I share that. The, the property, immediately to the north, one house there is also B three, but everything else around it is residential. Uh, so it's not a big swing to change that to residential and P and Z was in favor of moving that. And additionally, the next item on the agenda is actually the house next to it, the owner that owns that property also wanted to change that to R two, so it'd be the appropriate zone.
Okay, any additional questions or, or recommendations on number nine? Any, uh, objection to moving that forward? And then we'll just go right to number ten, since it's basically the same thing. Any questions or objections to moving that forward? Nope. Okay. Number eleven, a resolution accepting a quick claim deed from Warren Henry Hutton as trustee of the Warren Helen Hutton Family Living Trust.
This is a similar, what was on the agenda tonight earlier on the regular session, this is another property that they own. That gentleman owns, uh, he's not able to maintain them and take care of them and there's, I think it's a, a trust there and it's like nine oh one Henry Street is the address. Very poor condition, so I mean, it was, it's just gonna be one of those ones that's gonna. going to end up on our demolition list. We'll have to remove it and then have to try to get a collector's deed on it. It's just going to save us the process, have a quitclaim on it.
Okay, any questions, suggestions on number 11? Any objections to moving that forward to the next council meeting? Hearing none, we'll move that forward. Number 12, draft agreement for engineering services at the Omar Bradley Airport Tea Hangar and Taxi Line.
This is an agreement with Lochner Engineering, who's done most of our design work out there the last several years, and it's for the design of the tea hangars, and we have funding lined up for that. It's a 90% funded project, would cover 90, actually a little more than 90%, would be covered on both the engineering and the construction.
I don't have any questions on that one. Anybody else? Any objections to moving that forward to the next council meeting? Number 13, a resolution accepting the bid, Blue Valley Public Safety, Inc., Federal Signal Corporation, and authorizing contracting for installation of an emergency wire warning siren.
It's still on, so they didn't sabotage. Yeah, this is part of the capital improvement for EMA for the year, and it's an ongoing thing to bring all of our sirens up to date. And by doing this one, I believe it's the last one that we'll have to do to bring them all over. The next step would be to make sure that the council and the dispatch center could basically push a button and they can actually zone them off, so that's the whole purpose of this, so we didn't have to have everything activated for the entire city if it's not necessary, so.
So they're not zoned now? It's just a one-for-all now?
I think so. I think it's...
Really?
And the whole purpose was, the understanding I got out of what I got when I got here was that to get them zoned, and the other thing, I think it actually activates county line. The sirens actually activate county line.
Yeah, because it sends out radio, so it activates all the sirens in the direction of where I want them to be.
Randolph County's EMD was supposed to be working on the same project, so I don't know whether they're having their status.
Okay, interesting. So this is the last one that we have to replace to be up to par, then?
I don't want to be called the liar, so I'm going to say, I believe this is the last one.
Okay, very good. Any questions? Nope. Any objection to moving this forward to the next council meeting? Okay, we'll move that one forward. Number 14, change order number two for the North Morley Lift Station.
Yes, this change order is for, we're adding essentially 104-foot of height, a new manhole, and staff found a defective valve on the force main that needs to be replaced. We're just rolling all that together. It's increased in the price cost by about $25,000. We reduced it on the first change order by five, so it's about $20,000 altogether. It was determined that the lift station is being replaced. It has two sources of water coming into it. It was determined that there's too much I and I, which is inflow and infiltration, outside water getting in like drain lanes and stuff, for one pumping spot to handle it. So and then if we pump in two spots, DNR requires redundancy, so it would require four pumps instead of two. So really, this change order is just the gating, what this change order is going to cost extra is going to save us on the backend pump cost. And the 104-foot pipe that we're putting in is kind of going to reroute the sewer around the existing part of the parking lot, so it's not going to be driven over as much. And that there's the one pipe in there that's not being replaced in this project is now going to be brand-new. So and that, the one old pipe that's in there is, will be abandoned. So that's the main purpose of it.
Okay. Any questions for Steve? Hearing none, any objection to moving this forward to the next council meeting? We will move this forward. Thank you, Steve. Please, yeah, please permit. Number 15, Durage Dirt Purchase for Green Five.
Sure, so as noted in the budget process, this is a field we've kicked back two or three years. We've renovated all the others at Howard Hills. We've moved to Durage Dirt the last four or five years, I believe, four years, because it's the best in the market, both for municipal fields, college field and college fields. MLB uses it, too. It's easier to maintain, it plays better, and so everybody has been migrating toward that if they can budget for it. We moved to it prior to MCC, but it's also MCC's preferred field. They have three tiers. Essentially, we ruled out the top tier. That's why you don't see it in the packet. We showed the bottom two. We want that middle ground, which is the collegiate. And you'll see the sole source notation in there. There's a letter included in the packet. Essentially, for the benefit of, since it's sole source, we wanted to include at least two options and put them in front of you. We recommend collegiate, though, which is, again, the Goldilocks solution, the heavy media.
Is this some of that no-air dirt? You can't miss a ground ball?
Nothing like that.
Nothing like that?
We haven't found that yet.
Any questions regarding number 15? Hearing none, any objections to moving that forward to the next council meeting? All right. We'll stay with Mr. Bach. Number 16, golf course equipment.
Again, this is something we discussed in the budgetary process. You won't see it in the current fiscal year CIP, because we plan to, Mr. Hodges will be soon handling the finance process for hours in multiple departments, CIP financing. But essentially, we look to finance it with a local bank, pay one year in arrears, pay with annual payments as we often have, so it'll show up in next fiscal year. But the order will be made, you know, pending your all's approval, and it's about an eight-month lead time right now for equipment, so we want to have that ready for next season. Essentially, it's a rough mower, a fairway mower. There's a workman in there that they can use, high-flow workmen. Their equipment is 20-plus years old in terms of the workmans. Then they also have a sprayer unit included. And then in addition to that, you'll see behind that equipment proposal is some irrigation equipment. Toro's running, so our system is Toro, so we have to stick with Toro. We need seven new controller units right now. They have to do a lot of work manually, and that would allow them to set up a program by zones. And Toro has a buy three, excuse me, buy two, get one free deal right now, so we would buy five, get two free. We have seven controllers. And their Toro heads, we've been typically buying for $150, $200 bucks apiece refurbished. These are full-price heads, but they're buy one, get one free if you buy 50, so buy 50, get 50 free. It'll set us up for the next two to three years at a significant discount. So we would look at rolling both of those proposals, irrigation and maintenance equipment, into the finance package.
Is the irrigation heads, is that all that you need, or do you need more?
That'll get us by the next two to three years, yeah. You know, it's not going to be all we need for the next five to seven years, per se, but the longer, we want to satisfy our short-term needs as a budget-friendly factor. So as you see in the proposal, the buy 50, get 50 free saves us over $18,000, not an insignificant sum. Longer term, you know, as we've discussed in various meetings, including the budget meeting, we're going to have long-term needs in the next sales tax for more of a wholesale fix to the irrigation system. But short-term, this is what we need.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Bach?
Nope.
Any objections to moving this forward? Hearing none, we'll move that forward to the next council meeting. Number 17, receipt of bids to replace three SUV patrol vehicles for the Moberly Police Department.
So as part of our, keeping our vehicles up to date and as workable as possible, it's time to buy new vehicles. This year, we're slated for three SUVs. We put out a request for bids to Moberly Motors, Ed Morris, Motkins, and the other Chevy dealer in Columbia. We got one response back. The bid was due August 1st. Only Moberly Motors provided us a bid back to them, and they proposed to furnish us three 2025 Ford Explorer police package models for 44, 08, 9 each. And those vehicles mean all of our, all of our Prambers, we're dealing the vehicles. I didn't have a chance to ask you why we got Fords and not Dodges this year, but it could be because the Fords are suddenly available, maybe the Dodges aren't. Usually, we've had to order the Explorers, and those order witnesses have been very short. Apparently, they must be available now. But because they're...
Hope that's not a bad thing.
Well, no, it makes it easier on us, because I don't have to come ask you guys for permission to buy a vehicle six months before the tax budget comes into play. So we're kind of getting some normalcy now.
Makes sense, makes sense. Any questions for Chief regarding number 17? Hearing none, any objection to moving this forward to the next council meeting? Okay, we'll move that forward. Number 18, request from Moberly VFW Post 2654 to hold the 2024 Veterans Day Parade on November 9th.
It's just a normal parade. They do it annually, and so the paperwork's in front of you. It's the same route. Everything's pretty much the same on that one, except the date changes depending on the year. Start time and locations, all that are the same year to year.
Okay, any questions? Any objections? Okay, we'll move that one forward. And then number 19, an ordinance establishing the annual tax for the imposition of a 911 tax for the emergency telephone services, hereby imposed by ordinance number 6948.
Again, this is an annual thing that we have to do every year to keep our landline tariff in place, whatever the number of phones that have landlines. That's a little bit of money to go to the 911 to help fund that. But it's an annual thing. We have to do it every year. It has to be passed, and it has to be passed in September every year, so why are you seeing it now?
Does it ever go up?
No.
It stays?
I think that's the maximum, but set when we first put it, it can go no higher than that.
Gotcha, gotcha.
At least, that's all the paperwork and documents that I have. It's always been adding out every year. I'm pretty sure that was as much as was allowed to be on the tariff when they made it available.
Makes sense. Any questions for Chief regarding number 19? Any objections to moving this forward? All right, we'll move this forward to the next council meeting. Thank you, Chief. I think that's all we, all we have for the work sessions, yeah, all we have for the work session this evening, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? All those in favor signify by aye. All opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you.